All right, it's after nine o'clock. Today's Monday, February 22nd, 2016, and our board of county commissioners report to order, and our preacher did the show, so. Oh my God, this can be great today. We just thank you for the beautiful weather that we had this past week in the Lord, and we just ask, Lord, that you bring us some rain in this area, Lord, and we ask that you protect those who are in the line of fires when those do occur. We ask that you be with the first responders, Lord, as they respond to those needs in our county and in our state. Dear Lord, we just ask that you be with the commissioners this morning, be with them as they make decisions for the county. Be with each and every one of us as we work in the county, Lord, to do your will. It's impressive, I pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right, as you can see, the items are numbered wrong. I don't know, I said computer. I really have worked on Shannon's computer. I don't know why it just skipped over to two for some reason. Oh, I don't know. You're welcome. I didn't want to call you out specifically. So the first item is to recognize the minutes from the last meeting, February 8th, 2016.
Judge, I have one small correction on item 16, the local government corporation to provide an update. It references Commissioner Kelly. If I could just ask to be included in that update.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Kelly, I would like to give you some information on that agenda item.
Okay. Is there anything else? Any more questions or any other additions or subtractions that so have been asked? Number two, three, vouchers to consider an act upon approval of the payment of vouchers processed by the county office for the period of year three, 2016 through January 17, 2016. And there's been an amendment to it. So we are taking checks number 167185 through 167412, and wire transfer 678 through 683 in the amount of $3,188,999.95.
I'd make motion to approve of vouchers as well at county offices, so.
Second for discussion, I have one question, page 13 of 28, check number 167344, judicial systems. The amount of $4,601 tech and software support. It's slated to IT. I'm not sure what this expense was for.
I think this is for our jury pool software.
Was there a particular issue that support is what caught my attention, tech and software support? Was there an upgrade or?
It's just the software maintenance. They update it every year, and then they update the jury rule every year, and that's just the expense.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, raise your hand. And keep the treasurer's report. We recognize the monthly treasurer's reports. Okay, I'll just give you the totals this morning. I have this to the Sherry, and we are right about 94% collected, and all of our top 20 taxpayers have paid. This morning, and our checking general is $4,927,573.67. Tax pool, I have $398,749.67. Tax pool prime, $12,032,260.98. Texas class, $15,7,955.55. And in seeders, we have $7 million. Which brings our total cash, $39,366,539.87. Tax pool rate this morning is 27 basis points. Tax pool prime is 47 basis points. Texas class is 49. And our Emerald checking interest is 36.
So the Texas class, the $15 million, is that the first major investment in that? Because I know that was recently just brought to the court and then it was swaying for tax dollars. Okay, and would that process went okay?
Perfect, very smooth, very easy, all is well. All right, so recognized, you understand number five too, aren't you?
Yes.
Okay, tax pool to consider an act upon the resolution amending Arthur Ross representatives to tax pool.
And that is Cindy is moving up to auditing. Brooke will be moving into my treasurer's position. And so it takes a court resolution to change, make those changes, so this is to go to tax.
Okay, you have a motion.
I move that we amend the resolution that's determined representatives to sign on tax pool. Get that new signee will be Brooke for Trent.
Second, for a quick discussion, just to make sure I'm following, is this just to have some backup in the office if you're not necessarily there? Cindy is leaving treasurer's office and is now in the auditorium's office. And so Brooke will be moving to that position, and I hired David Flores will be starting Wednesday as the deputy assistant. But I guess my question is someone outside of the treasurer just having that person as a backup, is that what it says? Yes, okay, all right. And also the other departments, I mean, please, their backups as well. Okay, thank you.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, raise your hand. Did you say yes, Judge?
Yes.
Thanks, thank you. Insurance reports or anything similar to that here? No, no, I think I am so recognized. Number seven, county commissioner of continuing education, so recognized commissioner, we have certificate of completion for 16 hours. Continuing education for 2015, per section 81.0024, the local government code. So recognized. County extension office to hear and report from the agents regarding activity hosted by the county extension office. Elizabeth, how are you? Look at that, you're bringing stuff.
I'm bringing, yeah.
You have two minutes, sorry.
And as Elizabeth is setting up, just to make the court aware, you know, we started this, I think, last year, maybe even the year before, but as we were going through lots of transition of agents, we maybe dropped off the calendar a little bit. But every quarter, we're going to bring in agents up here, just to give you a quick update of what's going on at the extension office and to make sure everyone is aware. She's safe in the first rank.
Yes, I get the third one, okay. I feel like I should produce it. I'm so excited about this program. Y'all have little bags. This program is called a, oh, yes, thank you for letting me be here today, judges and commissioners. This program is called a Fresh Start to Help Your Youth. It kind of fits in the year and helping our families to think about living healthy lifestyles. And so I'm very passionate, y'all know, about health and wellness and fitness. And that's what I concentrate on for the extension office here in Potter County. And so first of all, I like to kind of brag on Potter County and have to sit my own horn, I guess, because I don't seem to come down from College Station very often. But if you look in your bags, you have a little booklet here called A Fresh Start to Help Your Youth. This was a state initiative. And if you look on the back, there were four county extension agents that were part of this state initiative, and you'll see my name in Potter, recognized there. So Potter Extension was recognized for being on this state program to put together a curriculum that would target limited resource families and help them live healthier lives. Most of the programs were 12 weeks. We found that that was too long for our families, for anybody. Nobody wants to go to a program for 12 weeks. So we made the program four lessons, hands-on. Everybody wanted to learn to cook. You know, we all go to the doctor, and we were told that we have hypolysis drawl or some diabetes or something, and we're left to fend for ourselves. And how do we shop for those healthy produce items, for those healthy meals, and how do we prepare those healthy meals? So that's what this program is all about, bringing families together, teaching them to live healthy, and not only that, but teaching them how to shop healthy on a budget and prepare meals for their family. Okay, so everybody has one of these in their bags. The families come together for lessons. We, I provide the education, the hands-on tools, they get incentive items. So in your bag, you have an incentive item. They get a cutting board, because they learn to prep meals. We want families to stay away from the drive-through. You know, our fast food meals aren't very healthy, a lot of sodium, a lot of fat, a lot of added sugar. So we provide cutting boards, we provide little paring knives, we provide measuring cups, we provide measuring spoons. There's all kinds of little incentive items.
Can you give us a knife, do you?
You didn't give a knife, no. Couldn't get past it. Judge, we haven't tried.
How do you perceive the reception to the program from the participants? How do you perceive the reception from all the participants, how does that cause their participation?
Oh, yes, yes, if you look in your packet, there is a, oh, no, it's right here. Sorry, I'm going to show you. Here's a folder here. But when you open this, the very first page is a little photo collage. You can see the participants engaged in the program. Today, there are over 60, what we call graduates. They also graduate, and they get a certificate. That's just the participants at the Westy, I believe, is who I highlighted there. And if you look through your packet, you will find the certificate that they receive as well. In fact, I put that in there, but they all graduate and get a certificate. They get to eat what they make, so they really enjoy it. We utilize a lot of the local seasonal produce. In your packet, there's recipe cards. They get the recipe cards. I'm very proud of these little guys here. These are little pocket guys, because I developed these little pocket guys. They didn't give me any credit. You know, you always get handouts, and you want something, I always think, I guess, a female mind, you want something you can put in your purse and you something easy to carry. So all these little pocket guys are there for them, fruits and vegetables, stretching $3.00 in my plate, little recipes. This is under the Better Living for Texas program, which is helping limited resource families live a healthy lifestyle, become active. And so I'll be going out into undershirt communities, reaching families. If there's any groups out there that you can think of, please let me know, because I'm excited about this program. It's an excellent opportunity for our families to learn to live a healthy life, which is what everybody's wanting to do. It's very important right now. Keeps our insurance costs down. So, yes, everybody has a little pedometer. We want them not to just eat healthy, but we want everybody to get moving, become active as a family. We want to see our family out in the park, out in the community, playing sports with their kids, taking walks, family activity, that type of thing. Want to get the kids away from sitting in front of the TV, not just the kids, but the parents as well. Y'all have any questions about what we're doing in the extension office?
Nope, you're doing a great job.
Thank you so much.
You feel a lot of energy from now 13:00 in the morning.
Thank you. I'd like to also offer these programs to the county. I think that would be an excellent opportunity. There's, this is just one program that, you know, I'm highlighting today, but if you have programs like Walk Across Texas, Step Up and Scale Down, different types of health-related programs that we can come, I can come and do lunch and learn for things like that.
There's a wellness committee now.
I said on the wellness. Okay, we talked a lot about that. It's just trying to get it going and figure out what building and what time. And I think we've had an conclusion. We're just going to offer and see who shows up. Just thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right, number nine, local government corporation to provide an update on what we've done, the full course.
All right, we met last Wednesday, February 17, pretty lengthy meeting. There were quite a few agenda items. Several that I just wanted to make sure the full court was aware of in terms of the various projects. So the TechStop Streetscape project is on schedule. They're expecting a spring bidding letting schedule to let that out. The Convention Center Hotel is on schedule, and as you can already see, XL is moving on their project. So you should physically be able to see that change. They are using, the hotel and the XL project are using where the parking garage is slated to go as their workspace, if you will. That will soon start to clear out, so they can get working on the parking garage. And that bid was officially awarded at the LGC meeting. It's 15.65, so 15 million, 50.6 million project. It was awarded to Western Builders as the lowest and best bid. So that was awarded, and I wanted to make sure everyone kind of knew of that. They did give a quick report on the different committees. And Commissioner Kelly, I had this definitely on my mind as I was thinking through some of the recommendations that were made of who would join those committees. There's not any new members than what was originally discussed, and what the chairwoman spoke to was that as the committee started to formalize, that there would be new participants. So what that looks like, I'm not sure yet, but I'm definitely watching that, and we'll make sure everyone is informed. But the main one is what they're calling the Community Engagement Advisory Committee, and how to get the message out to the public and make sure there's some consistency around that. So they're, they're going through that process. There was considerable discussion about the loan agreement, and I know Commissioner Church, you brought that up from a tiers perspective. It was 1.687 was the loan amount, so from the tiers to the LGC. So there was a lot of questions about the city loaning some money to the tiers, and then the tiers turn around and loaning into the LGC, which is an extension of the city. There was one day vote, and that was less, talking about the interest that was being paid and whether that was appropriate. But that did come back up, so I wanted to make sure and let Commissioner Church know on that. The majority of the agenda was from the committee, and I'll just call them B and D. But I hope I can say their name incorrectly. Dudley is the main group. But they are the third party that the LGC is contracted with to do this assessment, if you will, to do a new assessment. And so they came back with round one as they started their input and their information to the LGC. One thing they were very clear about was the meeting was not about the cost just yet. That was coming. And it wasn't about the team that would go in there, that that was still coming. And that is slated for March 23rd. That's when we were going to meet again on the LGC. And we're expecting another presentation to dive into that, the dollars, the team, whatever other information, but it was a month out after this. But what they did share is, as they did their assessment of the city, they really talked a lot about drive times. And so they gave an image of the city of Amarillo and really a circle around it, and 30-minute drive time and 45-minute drive time. So they looked a lot at drive time versus just surrounding counties or surrounding cities to see who would potentially make the drive and make the travel to come and enjoy the facilities. So that was different than what I had heard previously. I've heard a lot about cities or counties and who would come in. But they spent a lot of time about the drive time and really the circle kind of around the city. They looked at three big kind of key elements. So they looked at demographics of the area, the quality of the operator, and then the facility itself. And so they're saying those are really the three key elements that are critical for a facility in the city of Amarillo. And they seemed somewhat surprised, but they kept highlighting that through the presentation, the city that was most comparable to us was Midland, even out, so they looked at cities outside of Texas. But they looked at drive time, they looked at population, they looked at what they called personal wealth. So those that had disposable income. I personally shared, I thought the numbers were skewed a little bit, because obviously Amarillo is divided by two counties. And our average income for those that live in Potter is very different than the average income of those that live in Randall. So I think that skewed the numbers just a little bit, and I did share that. But they really compared us to Midland kind of on every single threshold. So they talked a lot about 70 baseball days and about 80 outside events. And they also looked at total capacity versus the seats. So the seats was a traditional model of what kind of facility they should build, how many seats, how many they can accommodate for. But they said really kind of the new wave of building these facilities is the square footage and the total ticket capacity. And so I was really vocal about making sure that wherever this landed, because I do think the numbers are a little skewed, the income level, to make sure that it was affordable for all of the families. And I certainly spoke from, I live, obviously, in the east and southeast Amarillo, and that I would I would hate for us to get down the road, and the residents who have this facility in their backyard can't afford to go there. And even really kind of challenged them outside the berm seats, because that's kind of the easy answer, is make the cheap seats out in the grass, grassy old little area. So they took that, you know, as a to-do, and they said they would really kind of look into that, especially since the next presentation is supposed to be around the economics of it. So the executive advisory committee, they got a whole, several hours of this debrief, and so the LGC just got a version of that. I did request a copy of that presentation from Bob at the city, and as I get that, I'll forward that to each of you. I just thought it was helpful, kind of graphics. It was new information. I personally thought it was fairly well-done, thinking about how to analyze what the needs might be and what the capacity is, and really looking at what they would call is kind of a non-traditional model. They also talked a lot about the facility to make sure that it has really kind of a downward view. So wherever the concessions are physically located, that the customer never has to leave their eyes on the ballgame, so that they can go up to the concession and always, you know, see the game, that we didn't want them to go behind the scenes and go buy popcorn or coke and then miss the game and miss the element.
Just put up some TV screens.
Yeah, put up some TV screens. And then they also shared the demographics, what they saw, the market view is roughly ages 20 to 44. And that, to me, seemed a little lower, because I know that we have quite a few that even go to the existing stadium that are, you know, certainly outside of that age range. And so I obviously keep watching how far they're going to have to walk, you know, what are, are we going to have ballet services? You know, those kind of things, that's all still to be determined, but it is something that we're continuing to watch.
Just out of curiosity, what was the ticket range across right?
Like, you know, I asked that, and they said roughly, they see it about eight dol, well, they have seen it in the past, so not for this facility, because that has not been scoped, the economics, but about $8.
The lowest was the highest?
They didn't give that. So that, I had that note on my to-do for the next round of the meetings. But that's a month from now, and I'll confirm the date here, just in case you would like to go. But I don't know if the presentation will be helpful to you, but I'll certainly forward that to you. It's a correction. It's March 23rd, not the 26th, March 23rd. So Wednesday, and we're going to start a little earlier, I think at 11:00 for that second round of presentations.
What's the confidence level of achieving that deadline, while?
You know, we're not, we're not in those, fire counting, not counting seat, quite honestly, Commissioner, and so we're not in those discussions. I wish I had more on your chair. All right, thank you, Judge.
Thank you, thank you. For 10, Apple Lucy Hills, unit number one, Riker Lane, aim to consider an act upon a request for a refund for a tax sale in 2000. English property owners were a successful bidder, but the property was deemed to the wrong party. You want to deal with that part first, then?
Yeah, and this is, I tell you, this is a, this is a question we're kind of, we're really looking for just sort of a, an equitable answer to this problem more than a legal one. And I'll tell you, I can give you a memo that summarizes the history of this story, but it is a long one. It goes all the way back to 2000. And I have a file that we've been working on this case on and off since 2000. But essentially what happened is the Stos, who are here with us today, a lot of people were successful pitters in a piece of properties in a tax sale, and they paid the amount of money, which was $650, and were never given a deed. And this was kind of in the time of transitioning from Mr. Roberts, our tax assessor, to Danny Messer. And for some reason, the property was put on the next tax sale and sold again. The second buyers actually got the property. And so we tried to work with the Stos, and it was something that Mr. Roberts was going to correct, and he never got around to it. We got all involved in the affair of Mr. Messer, and it was just something that we, there was really no clear solution to that. So the problem kind of, kind of went away, and Stos were able, this is a property I leave next to their resident. And they were able to eventually acquire property, win it again, then on tax rails, tax roads, a couple of years ago. So they have, they have another request for roads, and in course of that, they were also asking, as we had mentioned a long, one time, a long time ago, about how, well, maybe we could at least refund the money, because it is clear that you paid the money and you never got any, you never got your property back. And that was kind of lost in the cards, because we were worried about legality of doing that. But I'm here today to ask if that amount of money being refunded, simply because I think it's the, for two reasons, I think it's the right thing to do. And I, secondly, I can't tell you there's a valid legal justification for it, other than if there were a lawsuit ensued, we would probably spend that much money, at least, at least in the preliminary aspect of it. So I would ask you to look at it as kind of a view to sort of settling a dispute for it. More serious, I, essentially, I think, I just think it's the right thing to do.
It sounds like they've obtained the property.
They have, they were able to get the property back.
But they paid double court.
Oh, at least that. Yeah, I think more than that. I think they, I think the deed, I think, showed that they paid something around, something over $3,000. So, and we tried to work with the buyer and ask that the person who bought it, it's mistake, and they never would respond to us. It was a very difficult situation.
So that, so in essence, the Stos do not own that tract of land?
They do now.
And do now?
They do now, yes.
Okay.
So we're just here to discuss the $650?
Yes.
Well, I make a motion that we return that $650 to the Stos.
Just to be clear, where are those funds coming from?
We, I was discussing that at the hearing before the meeting. I would recommend you pay it out of your insurance fund, because it treated as a settlement lawsuit. Wherever that fund that would be, that, I mean, because that's the way I'm viewing.
And the money would come out of the insurance fund.
Is your chair really low today, or what? Does it take it a hunch, or is it shrunk? Okay, okay, so for letter A, we're going to, we have a motion, second, would you refund the money, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so a motion, second, all in favor, raise your hand. Zero. Okay, and that's the $650?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
B, to consider an act upon a request for a property to accept Riker Lane for county maintenance.
Somewhat more problematic, but we did, you know, we decided we can put these on the agenda. I hope this, this may not be the best time to do that, but I told that we put that on the agenda also. To consider, Riker Lane is a road that is not currently on county maintenance, and I believe that. And the Stos can speak for themselves if they want to, as I understand their argument, I think I provided you with the documentation. But at some point, remember, we had the road district to improve some roads, and when those roads were brought up to standards, there was a motion made, again, about the year 2000, to accept those roads in the county system. And the, the agenda item was worded to, well, the recommendation was to accept the new roads in Apple Lucy Hills, unit number one. in Apple Lucy Hills, unit number one. And the motion was to accept roads in Apple Lucy Hills, number one. So I think the Stoves' argument there is that that road should have been accepted for maintenance at the time. I'm not so sure I agree with that, but, but, I mean, the question, it becomes one of whether you want to accept that stretch of road for maintenance or not. Am I correct, Sebastian, we do not currently maintain?
No.
We work with Riker.
Are all the other roads out there maintained by us?
Blue eye, or the road over, we did it last year, but the rest of them, there's a few vendors that are not.
Yeah, but I guess I understand.
Hit and miss.
By kind of looking over reviewing the motions and the discussions, what was at that time, the assumption, I guess, from the court perspective was to accept the road, even though that one where it was not in the...
That's the question. Now, I will tell you that I was there, that was the intention of the court, but, but, you know, there's some, it's up to you. The county has, have we gone in and placed the dead end sign there at the end, right? There's a cul-de-sac or what looks like to be a cul-de-sac.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, this road, like it says, is dedicated to county maintenance. And we did put up some red reflectors and triangles at the end because I guess the kids were running their four-hitters and all kinds of stuff through there and we just put those up to stop them. I mean, there's signs up there just because it's not maintained, we should still put up signs. We've got street signs and stuff like that. But I met with them a long time ago about getting them together. The homeowners wanted to do it themselves and I forget what the estimate was, but I gave them an estimate and asked the contractor to do all those roads and I've never heard back from them. As far as I know, there's four to six residents after, I believe.
On that road, on that road alone, just, on Riker Road, okay, Riker Lane?
Yeah, it's about fifteen hundred feet and it had been surveyed again, you know, the whole process, survey, ditches, culverts, subgrade, leaching and all that.
So Sebastian, would you be your recommendation that we review that before we just accept the maintenance? I mean, what I'm hearing is cost and when you're saying these items, so I'm just wondering if it would be helpful to know what it would take to bring the road up to county standards before we make that decision?
It's gonna cost a lot. Like I said, I did it up probably four or five years ago, but I got a bad memory. It's gonna cost quite a bit to get it up to county standards to accept it.
You said, you mentioned that the residents wanted to do it?
Well, they, I talked to, I forget who it was, it was on the end, on the ride, I met out there with them and I went through it real quick just to see culverts and drainage and stuff like that and I gave them a ballpark figure back then and I'm sure it's changed because everything's went up, so I don't...
Was it ballpark for you?
I can't even remember, like I said, I got a bad memory. I don't wanna say something and then it ain't way on, it's way over.
Yeah, this, I visited with the neighbors out there, this was thirteen, that's right after I took my seat and we did bring it to the court at that time. It was not accepted, but this motion, to me, brings a little different light to it. So I think we have to...
You didn't think that was their intent? You were there, you didn't think that was the intent?
I was there.
Do you remember that?
I don't.
I was right up there.
I don't think it was, but...
But they amended it, they amended it. The original motion was amended, but it still says to take in, says the whole thing.
Yeah, but I, but...
It said, the roads...
But the fact that, yeah, I mean, you know, there's a lot going on here, I know. I mean, there is that argument there and I know y'all, I know there's, these are always troublesome questions because you want to do the roads and we get criticism for not doing roads, but you can't do all of them and so therefore you've gotta, you know, I mean, you can't really, you gotta, when you do take a road, it's gotta be a special case, otherwise you're playing favorites and you don't wanna do that. So I know it's a tricky situation.
And I believe when we took over, if I remember correctly, it was about Apple Lucy Hills, we did that one section, the road over, because of the bus trail or something like that. It was something of emergency vehicles and it was pretty bad, they couldn't get down through there because they had had the fire. So it was something of that nature.
So from your perspective, you would prefer an assessment prior to bringing that back to court to me?
I'll do whatever y'all tell me to do. I don't wanna say that we wanna do it or don't do it because, like I said, the bottom line is the dollar.
And that's true, except from your perspective, for us, you should have that assessment to get the dollar, please, automate that back to court and see what we can do.
You're only gonna have to start to grab surveys like we did.
Sebastian, I think I'll give apology because I meant to talk to you about this before and I apologize for spreading this on you. I should have approached you on this before the meeting, I just forgot.
So it's kind of a little, because in court, it basically, whether it was assumed or not, it was over.
No, it wasn't clear. I mean, I think the fact that it is vague, I mean, it really puts a whole new charge on this court.
Sherry's got a hand up there, I think she's gonna need to house some break.
I think I can clarify the roads that were accepted because we sold this property, we had a ton of tracks when sold and a big chunk of it was bought by Maisy Messers. And they're the ones that went out there and did all of the roadwork on the back end of Apple Lucy Hills. And I imagine those were the roads that were accepted. That's what they specifically said in this motion, including the Maisy.
Oh, this happened before, this is pertaining to the roads on the east side that were taken over for bus routes and various things before Maisy came in. I mean, it may have been some of them along about the same time, but the county took some of these other roads over and started running bus routes on them. And then he bought that and done his own development because there was enough of that land left to be sold that was feasible, he would put roads in. Most of this other was already pretty well developed and settled, but the roads were never maintained. That's the ones that were pertaining to all this. We've been petitioning for this for longer than anybody out there because we were one of the first roads in that whole development. And this deal with the other roads that were done recently, I mean, I have several things that I could present on this, other than just the fact that it's not being, it's not done. There's several things to this, it goes back, not just the money.
Should I come up and address the court? Come on. Just for the record, give your name and your address so the court can keep that...
Jayden and Alice Stowe, P six oh two, Riker. This is concerned with the lane there in Apple Lucy Hills, this is developer out here north of town, orders in from the north side, Broadway on the east. About thirty-five years old. And the part that Sherry's talking about, this development goes back, this four and one percent, first developed and then it went into foreclosure default by the original developer and then Maisy came in and bought about half of this development and he finished on that. Those roads he built is set. The other roads that were on the original part of this, since we've been out there, this is some of the ones we've been petitioning for from the get-go. And that lake region apart, our road is one of the only ones that's not done now. There's another two or three small stretches and the one that we mentioned next to it, I think it's Skipper. We've got Riker there, I had it in William McFlatt, that's the one we're on. The one that was done after that, three, four years ago, that Liam was mentioning, Wildberry and Starlight, that road was added and, let me back to you, Mr. Smith, as well, we were told at one time if we had six kids on the road, we would be taking in for a bus route. Well, these other roads were being taken in and we're watching, you know, buses run on and everything, so we're asking for all of ours. We told us the six kids, we didn't have them at the time, later on, all of us together had six kids on, we contacted them through the commissioners and George Malco from River Road School, came out and took a look. We still didn't get it, we were working with Strick Watkins at the time and various commissioners, but I think he was the first one that we started with some. He told us, you know, the county funds were running low and various things, he was working on it, he had more material possibly coming up available and they might be able to do it. That's why this paper, we thought maybe that was accepted with the roads at that time and possibly just never got around to do it for whatever reason. But it appears at least the possibility that that was intended to be taken in. Now, of course, we had some reasons why we felt like, this thing now, we've been out there thirty-three years without any maintenance, just small maintenance, a couple of locusts, it's got small tractor and blade, which you can't do a whole lot with, but the, okay, we already mentioned that, the maintenance, I'm not gonna go over that again, we felt like it was at least an indication of the possibility that it was intended to be accepted. Now, our road is older than any road on that side, we have more people living on it, we've been asking for a long amount of time and we have school kids this down. Now, this includes Wildberry and Starlight that was taken in within the last, there were four years. So the question is what grounds was it put on as opposed to ours? We have one access to ours, if you look on the flat there, you can see that can be accessed from here and going to the north, the Broadway to the east, wherein ours is a single access as far as a fire weather emergency, to get down. And we do have school kids on the steel. So in relation to those being a burden, which have one of ours is considered to be open, we don't understand why it's stated, our children would be asking for longer amount of time. One thing was wondering if they'll also property values based on evaluations that the appraisal district places along. Part of that evaluation has to be on the relevant conditions to make the evaluation what it is. Since the counties came in and took several of these roads over and provided all of the roads that we haven't had for the last time that we pay taxes based on the same rate of surrounding property values, I mean, everybody knows that they consider all area when you value what a property's worth and the improvements and how it's valued and drivers is a big thing. We've been paying taxes for thirty-three years on this, yet we haven't received this. We feel like we're basically paying for a service we're not receiving and over this much years, there's twenty-six lots on this road, seven residents, hadn't always been that many, but, I mean, there's been a lot of tax money come in on this based on that evaluation that we feel like, in a sense, we paper this road. Now, this is, would you give them a county sanction, that other paper there showing, I just put that on there to show you that this exit on public development, we went out there and got together, built a tree all the way, this might pretty strong and it's on the mission and everything. So when the original developer defaulted on this thing and the planned foreclosure, at what point does the county assume any responsibility if they're gonna be giving the charge, taxes based on evaluation with this road and completed development? So they sharing the responsibility, apparently they did because they put in several of these other roads for bus routes and fire access. You mentioned that one that they approved their star right and...
Riker.
That's, we talked that, I would have busted up, but we've never seen a bus on it before the River Road School District, it ain't part of the bus route, they don't run the bus on it. And it ended up being a pretty major grass fire out there the year before, we thought, well, it's probably for that reason, but there again, they don't have anything about it, that we don't have the same problem and less access to it. Now, as far as, what I'm asking, the county's responsibility, if they felt responsible for those roads, for whatever reason, why not ours? We've been there luckily, lived there a few years before those roads were even put in. So, and also, just, that little old column there that we highlighted, this thing's got pretty developed on the east side, where Sherry was talking about, where they come in and Maisy come in, they put in good roads, Maisy did it, they finished that all up. It got developed fast, there's no access from this side of the development that you can see over to that, other than that little old column, that road's never been put in, but that would be a huge plus in my opinion for a bus route. If they had run that Riker and that way it gives them access over to that side without nothing back on the end of the road. So we just kinda highlighted that if in the future they wanted to do that because of the amount of kids that would be a big plus, it's just supposed to be a road that was never put in. And as far as the county maintenance, we were told at one time that they couldn't, it was getting desperate, we asked them, they just come out and blake this thing, you know, because it's getting terrible. It looks like a pretty good road, it falls in on roads that are pretty good fire weather roads, but when you get the right kind of weather on them, snow or slow rain or stuff, they're totally different than that space for this road now. It used to have a good ground, run all the paths like this, but it's okay in fair weather, but it's not the case now. And we've asked them, you know, to just blake it, come and blake it, but they told us we didn't do any county maintenance on it or they'd have to take it over, so nothing at all. So anything we've done, we've had to do ourselves, neighbors, you know, what we could. But now it has the signs on it, at the request of some of the neighbors that are trying to get it through us, and they were some of the ones trying to get it maintained. So it's got signs and the dead end signs that is put there, which effectively locks it off from some of the tracks on down and now I have no access to them. Not that anybody lives on them, they were, they're open up. But also, they come out and mowed the ride away last fall, which we appreciate them watching the plan, but it's one important now is there's limited maintenance already being done, it's just we're asking for complete maintenance. And refer back to that, at least the possibility that those minutes from two thousand was possibly meant to include ours since they were working on it and, you know, that they had what they could and we felt like it possibly got included and they would take them in whatever order they could, they just never got down to us. And so based on that consideration as well as these other merits that we presented, and one other thing I'll bring up, maybe again, consequential, but last time, we've got one neighbor that has to have pretty regular medical service, they have been out several times in the last couple of years and they expressed concern in whether they would be able to get down this road in the right conditions. And it was actually in pretty fair weather, but just relative kind of drive up. They saw what the road would be probably if they had to come down it with, you know, a lot of mud and stuff on it like it had been and we knew that it probably would be possible to. But anyway, based on the merits that we presented, as far as the possibility of that two thousand minutes, we would ask to have it for the county maintenance.
Are all these roads out there that yours maintain?
Yes, they're all of that, Skipper, that one just east of us and there's a couple of small ones back on the far south. They're not complete roads, they're just like small stretches, but then a bigger road. Other than that, as far as, I know they're all being maintained.
They all are?
Yes. Now, the one he's talking about, that's one next to us called Skipper, it's possibly a little short run up to a couple of steps from that, but then these others that he took over, that Wildberry and Starlight were the last in that area, other than a few small ones. So it's us and one more that I'm aware of in the whole area and then a couple of small stretches on the other side.
But it's not wearables?
Yes. Sebastian, what are we talking about, money wise? You don't know?
As far as maybe they didn't maintain.
In any respects.
Without saying the word.
Ballpark, the estimate that was given us that time, according to the paper, I wouldn't know, I guess he's one of them, it was sixty-seven thousand to ninety-seven thousand and there's no... I didn't, I didn't realize if anybody got that with you, I wouldn't, I think there's no way we would, that's probably why.
And it depends whether you're going to go to a blacktop or, uh, still durable.
If we do it, it can be still cool. But may I make, uh, make a suggestion? Uh, I know it's a lot of money to do this, there's, there's more residents out there. I, I've got four phone calls about the same situation, roads, uh, dedicated to the county but not for maintenance. And like a valid or, they passed, we go out there twice a year and just lay the road to make it passable for them to get in and out of their houses. But that's up to y'all, I mean, that's a, that's an alternative to the, the pricey, uh, bringing it up to specs. We can play it twice, uh, a year and just make it where they can get in and out. I don't know if that would satisfy them, I'm sure it's better than what they have now.
Sebastian, almost your question.
I was just gonna say, what, what is the other road's merit that brought him up to?
That was a long time ago.
That's what I'm saying, we've been trying since before those roads, coming along at the same time and ours did that.
I think two thousand seven or six, back then is when they adopted the, the county specs, because all these developments were coming in. And we made them mail the roads up to county specs to, uh, to accept them and now that, uh, so before that is when those roads were there, so I don't know how they, man, about the other.
But there, there are many roads that predate our subdivision. And now with some of those that puts in a subdivision, they're required to bring up the, put the roads to county specs and then we take them over, there's no problem. But almost all the roads we're talking about, we've ever gotten requests for, or were in, were in subdivisions that were done before that subdivision policy. And, and typically the original owner runs out of money, he bans, so it changes hands and no one is ever there. Uh, that's what's happened, uh, on, 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 here.
Keep, keep in mind.
I hate to just say that we can't do any of this here, because I hope that at some point that there are situations like this and there's, I mean, I get the calls to, Val di Oro, I've got another one. But, uh, maybe there is a possibility, I don't know, I hope we can think about how do we solve problems? Is there a possibility of starting to do some sort of a rotation of looking at certain roads that need to be brought?
There's not a lot of roads that are like theirs.
We're doing a big project this year and that we can't do it this year.
The majority of Val di Oro, there's only a few roads in the residential areas, I guess you could say, that are in that shape. So, I mean, the only place you wrote the guy is that, but theirs, Skipper, and there's a few other that are bad shape like that. But the majority are in Val di Oro and I know, you get the phone calls just like I do, there's, there's all them roads out there that they want to pass me and be able to touch them.
Because they're pretty two thousand seven or that day, do we have to bring them up to the, to a blacktop?
Bring them to, yeah, the county specs, you know, uh, spec A, play it twice a year, B, bring the ditches, I mean, you could do it however you want. And it's not expensive to go out there and just blade it where they can pass. We just have to clean the ditch, but we clean ditches on all the roads anyway. And we clean, blade it and bring it up to where they can just come through there and not have any issues with all the road spots.
Excuse me. Problem with this, uh, we've been trying to get contractors to do that possibly, but it's just a waste because all of the base materials down there, it's down, uh, long ago washed it out. So it's, it's just down where there's nothing to support it when you go get the rain and snow on it. If you break the end of the sides, it used to be part of the edge that's now the high part of the road and it's just going to be more soft material probably on it. I'm not saying it wouldn't be better than what we got, it definitely would, but it's not very lasting to deal when you don't get enough rains and stuff.
We definitely have to fix the drainage before we get into the road. And at the end of the year, we have collegiate left or whatever, we can always start putting some in there slowly.
Don't you always get a, uh, someone that, that makes them?
Oh, the, uh, the rap, yeah, from the state, we get a lot of that, but we made some with collegiate and that's a good base too, we could also put that down, we got plenty of that.
So would it be possible, um, I'm, I'm kind of hearing two things, uh, Dave, from a research perspective, it would be nice to know, to your question, Mr. Stone, it would be nice to know what, what happened with the Starbright and Wilbury Trail, um, what would happen that caused the county to kind of take those over? Because I think that's a question that you've had, so we want, certainly want to try to loop that back. And then Sebastian allowed you some time to visit with all of the residents in that area, because, you know, this agenda item was, maybe didn't give you some lead time, to visit with all the residents about what, of what that might look like. And maybe that'll give you some time to even get an estimate of dollar amounts of A, B, and C, and here's kind of what we're looking for. I would hate to take, me personally, I would hate to take action with so many unknowns right now, but I think his comment has certainly warned a bigger conversation. And I think, I feel like that's maybe what you're asked for addressing the board, is to start talking about the road and what those options might be. Yeah.
And this is a problem that's not going to go away.
Right.
There's going to be more and more of that, a bunch of.
Well, especially if there's other roads left. If I live on that other road and the county has now approved today, uh, Riker.
That's it, it's more of a path than anything.
Yeah, I mean, if I live anywhere else and even outside of this, um, area, if I live in, in Valley di Oro, then I'm saying, well, why do, why this one and why not mine? So I'm just trying to add a little framework around it to maybe.
I'd like to see it start to develop some sort of, because at some point, I'd like to look at many of the other roads too, are they, they need to be, uh, just what those priorities? You know, just to say, yeah, we're going to do them all, that's, that's out of the, the scope we can do.
We have to, uh, roads like that, so far back, we need to have them surveyed to make sure we're on the correct boundaries. Because, uh, it's like the fish brains, we had to have it surveyed, we found out some stuff that we didn't help them with. So we definitely need to have that surveyed out there, that's six to eight thousand dollars, just to have it surveyed so we know where we're looking.
Yeah, I bring up one other form, uh, i- is that logical, thank you, you think you're paying, you got an entire development, you're throwing in everybody else, so you're paying on the valuation of the good development, maintaining all of the roads that you're not getting. Our neighbor's been trying to sell their place for several years, they've dropped the price pretty good, it ought to be worth one of the biggest drawbacks because of the road. Yeah, we're taxed up here, it really depends, if you sell, if you sell down here, it just don't seem fair. That's the county's, we, we pay the county taxes to do this, that's why I say we feel like it's in the paper, it's just.
Well, and I, I don't live in the county, I live in the city, uh, but I, I think sometimes too, when the development happens and you're looking at the property, you know, I, I always, I, I always kind of have a little caution for the homeowners that are either buying the land or moving in the land or acquiring without their piece of the development happening. Because I feel like that's a risk that you guys take. It never makes its way to you and as you said, the money runs out and then they get to walk away. And here you are, now you own the property and you're kind of stuck with what's left. Yeah.
If you're being taxed as if it was done, then it's a little different.
That's your point.
Yeah, I understand.
Consider the road, so it's pretty big, you know, we don't want to, you want to develop, that's one of the things that you look at as a route.
Sebastian, Sebastian, how long of an assessment do you think that you would be, give them some criteria to evolve with, that we discuss?
Probably just a week, I think, I think it, there's a plan on that, so it shouldn't be hard as far as that goes, I can look at that. We can go out there, like I said, I gave them an estimate, I'll back, I can look at it again, independent, I can give you several different ones for just laying collegiate or whatever.
Do you want to bring this back in two weeks then?
Yes.
But this was very helpful, thank you for including this.
Okay, we'll continue that for two weeks. Formal bid awards to consider an act on awarding formal bid number one-one-two-two-dash-one-six. Road materials to the lowest responsive vendors listed on the award recommendation sheet, evolve for reward, a pound bid on line out of one.
Yes, um, on this particular one, uh, one out of one, you can see the asphalt was the delivered, described between western emulsion and heartland asphalt. I've asked Commissioner Vaughn, I'm going to say western emulsions, number one tile, number two will be heartland. So whoever, whoever draws out will be the primary and then the other will be the secondary. Is that, is that possible?
Number two.
Okay, so the primary is going to be heartland and then the secondary will be western emulsion. Um, I was going to ask Sebastian, do you have anything to add to any of these bids?
Yeah.
And round out bid to specifications.
I make a motion that we approve formal bid number one-one-two-two-dash-one-six. Road materials to the lowest responsive vendors listed on the award recommendation sheet and to reference number one, uh, the heartland asphalt.
Okay, with a second.
Second.
Uh, heartland was the primary and western emulsion the secondary.
Okay, the motion in a second, all favor, raise your hand. Number twelve, equipment purchase to consider an act upon following a transfer of funds for the purchase of two panasonic tough books from CDW government in the amount of eight thousand two hundred seventy-two dollars seventy-three cents. Cost and time required to repair the units means replacement would be more, more feasible option. Find your question from equipment repair replacement account.
Okay, um, from my information, I was given, um, Sheriff Thomas, you can correct it if I'm wrong, these have already been received. This is just a matter of accounting, uh, because the, the transfer of funds from the equipment repair replacement, is that correct?
That is correct, because, uh, if we had waited to purchase these, that would have led to the, those without communications.
And these were purchased on a contract.
How long have the other ones, Sheriff?
Five years.
Five years.
The end of the line.
Sheriff, is there a reason these didn't come through budget process? I mean, did something catastrophic happen with them? They just went out?
They just weren't working. I mean, they were out in the forest, it was pretty light. And they're not on, they're not on rotation, but we do, we're in the process right now of replacing all the rest of them, don't be in their budget, they'll be through the jack ground for that.
Okay, thank you.
That'll be one of the companies tomorrow to look.
Okay, motion on that one.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Kelly, second by Mr. Church, all favor, raise your hand. Five, zero, thank you. And B, the purchase of two computer workstations in one lateral file from office once furniture and supply in the amount of four thousand five hundred thirteen dollars twenty-five cents from City of Emerald BPA slash TCPN R one-four-two-two-zero-eight. Existing furniture was purchased nineteen eighty-six. Some of you weren't born yet, and is designed for top runners rather than computers. Ours to be transferred on the equipment repair replacement, assuming this is Judge Whitburn's court.
Gary, is there a reason this is now and not during the budget process?
You know, they've been wanting new furniture for quite some time and they were hoping to wait until we did something with the building, but they are starting to fall apart and they just can't wait anymore.
And there's no money in that account obviously.
They can't, they can't find it.
Okay, all right, do you have a motion?
Quick motion to approve of item two, excuse me, as of tonight.
In a second.
Second.
Thank you. Motion, second, all favor, raise your hand. Five, zero, thank you. Mike, any projects you want to discuss today?
I'll answer any questions you may have on the report that I issued, but just a highlight of two of them, uh, after nearly three years, we finally got the projects at the program to approve replacements. We have a mandatory pre-bid walk-in today, this afternoon, we bring that back to court. Uh, baseball stadium, uh, we have a meeting, Commissioner Dean and I do this morning, uh, with the U General Manager will be going through the stadium to, to decide what we're going to do in the concession stands in order to get that project moving forward. The window opportunity there is probably only going to be about forty-five days, depending on which direction we go in order to attempt to get these concession stands completed.
Mike, just, just one quick, quick clarification for the court. So this is just the interim general manager, um, from Grand Prairie. He's coming down to start this work before they, um, publicly announce the local general manager for the Emerald team. So I just wanted to be clear on that, that announcement hasn't been made and, um, Gary indicated that would happen, um, early March timeline. So I know more, I'll pass that along.
Certainly, we, we approach that from a very conservative.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
Okay, uh, next one is the county extension project, uh, Commissioner DLD, you got the proposal sent Friday regarding the site drainage issue. We do have a proposal from a manscape architect that has done it for Potter County throughout the past. We do have funds allocated within our building repair account, I believe, forty-five hundred dollars, we, uh, we'd already taken money out, we would spend this year, so it's around forty-five hundred dollars. So we could utilize a portion of that money in order to see where this design, what this is going to give you is the actual, uh, design and the projected cost to reach to your budget, to put it in there to address the landscaping of the area, site drainage around the county extension.
And so Mike, just to add a little to that to the court, because I know this is, uh, we've talked about this several budget sessions. So this is Green Plains Design that we met with and we talked about whether there's a need for a wall. You always called it like a retaining wall to help defer the water and the runoff. And so he came out, did an assessment and thought that we might be able to do it with some, uh, irrigation and landscape design, so without the wall, which would obviously be a cheaper, um, approach, but thought that that could be accomplished. I'm looking to keep me in line to make sure I say the right thing. Uh, so the estimate that he's given on just the design, and we're not taking action on it, just, just to make everyone aware, is, um, one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five. So that's the design of trying to get the work done versus the retaining wall. So more of that to come, um, but I know that that's an item, the water that keeps getting into the building and he's kind of coming up here to you. So I wanted to add that, thank you.
I like the, the water that was probably leaking underneath, but we completed the hydrostatic and static testing on all these plumbing and sewer. It's not from any plumbing we have. Uh, the only thing that has been determined, uh, we did a lot of thermal imaging around there to see where the water was coming out. It's, it's got to be groundwater just picking or seeping up into the concrete. Even though it's supposed to have a moisture barrier, we all would, you've been out there during floods and you've seen how concrete's right in front of that building. So we'll be getting everything away from the building, we ended up, uh, doing a lot of landscaping, removing, possibly removing a few trees up through there to get the drainage that was there back in there. The, uh, flooring project, uh, I'll be bringing that to you. We hope to have the contractor on board this week to get out there to do a walkthrough. I'll make sure, where, whenever that does happen. View project, the, you all approved this last year, but it was on the Santa Lake. Uh, the top two tier levels on the terracotta, we're looking to build load force with them. Uh, we do have an opinion of cost and that from architects is, uh, we've got all of it there, we, y'all have approved that within the budget. So I'll be getting purchasing, uh, to receive forth, getting those bids out, getting a purchase order issued for our area to.
Well, why, but we're going to be starting working on that.
If we do not do it this year, then we're probably going to need to go back and revisit the damage, because it could have got worse. We've got to get this right.
What about the color, color rods on top of the building?
The only, I just got a, a green card back from Dan, we sent in another letter and, uh, so I'm giving them change, but I'm not too deep respond. We just got a card from Dan last week, so they, they did receive that. Here is the latest and greatest from that I visited with, uh, our electrical contractor late Friday afternoon. We will be monitoring that situation, uh, he, or the company that we have visited with during those meetings, uh... He, or the company that we had visited with during those meetings, the company Coloronics was willing to give a new controller to put on. So we're going to attempt to do that this May correction.
Okay.
To see if we can do it without any problems.
Okay, and I think that's kind of what we, the letter said was you'd offer to do this before.
Yeah.
There, can we just do that again? So that's good, okay.
What about CPS?
CPS is a week. The furniture is supposed to be in this week.
Your report today is that one, four hundred and nine five individuals in jail, ninety-six adults and females. Nobody's in tortures. Seventy-nine percent of those are felonies and thirteen percent are miscreants. David, the county attorney, now leaving. Number second session, I would like to discuss vaguely that that order that we're doing for Penal Code four six oh three is ready to go. It's been signed by everybody but one judge. And she refuses to sign it. So it's ready to go. Everybody you guys are ready. Okay? So I guess we can put that on next time.
I have a couple items. We talked about roads. I've got a letter from a citizen in the Valley Dioro that the sheriff wrote, taken care of. Says it's only a hundred yards. And we've got to talk to, Sebastian's talked to this lady already. But anyway, we will probably discuss that sometime as well. I'd like to just thank both the sheriff's office and our fire department for the work they did on the fire out north of town last, last week. Great work and I think what we've done to help both of those departments over the years is a very positive thing. And during this campaign season, I've been accused of a lot of things, but I will proudly stand. I can say that what we've spent on our fire department and public safety, I think it's only good.
I do too. One of the many, many, I said, county judges, where is this going? The command center. When there is a, a fire and the sheriff called me out, so, because I was riding my cute little Camaro out there towards the fire. I had to wonder what the heck I was doing, but, but once I got out there and sat in the command center with you guys for about two and a half hours, I, I have a newfound respect for all of you for what you guys do for the safety of the people that live out there. So I'm thanking, hats off to you too, so.
I'm commenting on the fire. I had a, ran into it. John Critzer, he has a ranch out there along with Miles' sheriffs. And he was just elated at the jobs that the guys did out there. I want to pass that on to be part of the record here with how, how amazed he was at just the job he did. Kudos to them.
Good, thank you.
And one thing, Judge, to add to the kudos for the whole county, the neighborhood project initiative kicked off. So this is the partnership between the city and the county to start to look at areas of our city that just need a little more help. So the first one kicked off in North Amarillo. It'll be North Heights is the first initiative. And the judge sits on that committee with I. And I know as we were planning that in terms of, you know, will people show up? What will that look like? I think we were all pleasantly surprised that we ran out of chairs, you know, all those things that you can only kind of wish for around in momentum. And so, Commissioner Vaughn, I know this is your precinct and so I'll certainly let you speak to that, but I thought kudos to the court for willing to kind of take that initiative. It's seventy-five thousand out of our budget, seventy-five out of the city to match it. And really, quite honestly, we didn't have as much detail as we would like to have out of the gate. So it was really some thought and, and some vision about what that could and should look like for, for our county. So I just wanted to say thank you. It was pretty overwhelming emotionally to see so many people care about the neighborhood and exciting for what it might turn into.
Absolutely. I think it shows that so many of the investors, the passion, the interest in our community that system is there. It shows. I know this quite a long time, but I'm just very excited that these public entities that is the, the county and the city have come together for that express purpose and I see the positives moving forward in so many aspects.
It's all good. Okay, nothing else we are agenda.